I'll wrap again. There we go. All right, I will call to order a meeting of the school committee, sorry, Thursday, May 25th, 2023. We are returning from executive session and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, without indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would just ask that if you have a mobile device that you silence it if you're able to. And we will begin with public comment. Is there a public comment? All right. So we will start with recognition for Aiden Stone.
Great. There's a lot of folks here for Aiden Stone tonight.
I know, he's got a fan club.
Aiden's a junior at North Andover High School and he's receiving President's Volunteer Award for spending over 250 hours at Debbie's Treasure Chest. Linda Harvey, the Executive Director, is here tonight along with some other folks, Adriana Ramos. Janice Phillips for Barry Feingold dropped off a citation earlier. His parents are here. And Mr. McDevitt's going to present the school committee citation as well. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Linda Harvey.
Thanks. There's a microphone there if you don't mind.
Yeah, that's okay. My daughter is going to just wave. So Debbie's Treasure Chest was started by children, two of them that were mine, Maxine, my older daughter, and my younger daughter, Talia Harvey. Talia is also the, not only the co-founder, she's also on the Board of Directors, and she's also, most importantly for tonight, the adult advisor for the leadership group, which Aiden has been participating in, I think, since sixth grade. So he, the first time I met Aiden, he was all this big. So now it takes two of those and he's still taller. So Aiden is a remarkable young man and he has completed over 250 hours of community service, not just for Debbie's Treasure Chest. That's taking all the community service that he does within the community. And Debbie's Treasure Chest is just the certifier of the hours. But he has commit, has done a lot of hours at Debbie's Treasure Chest, most recently sorting four pallets of New Balance sneakers. And we needed someone really tall. And I am sorry, I need to stand on that box and you fell down. But Aiden is a great guy. And one of the things that's most remarkable about Aiden is that most of our people are from Methuen because that's where Debbie's Treasure Chest started. But Aiden came in one day with his mother, many years ago, five years ago, and he hasn't left. His mother is also involved, helps out as much as she can, and we really appreciate the whole family. And I would recognize his mother, stepfather, and grandparents, who, as we know, it takes the village and he certainly has a great village. So tonight he will be presented with the highest award that anyone in his age category can receive under the Presidential Volunteer Service Award, which is the Gold Division. He will receive a certificate that Talia will give him, as well as a letter from President Biden, and a gold coin. So Aiden, come on up. And I think we also have.
Yes.
Yes, I was going to introduce today Representative Adrian Ramos, who so graciously at the very last moment got this for us. And she also has something from Senator Barry Feingold.
So I do, I mean, it's not coming from the President, but local matters. And, you know, when I was asked to, to just prepare a citation, I actually wasn't even asked to be here because it was a last minute request, when I read about what you've done, I said, let me, let me get here because it is important that people that are young community members recognize, are recognized for the volunteer and the time that they spend in our community because you are making a difference and you are, you are an example, I'm sure, to the kids around you. And I actually spoke all about how I was coming here to my kids because it's important that they know that you're never too young to start. They are not tall like you, but that's all right.
He didn't start that tall.
There's always someone that can, you know, there's always something for everyone. So there is a citation here from the Senate that reads, "Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Aiden Stone in recognition of your achievement in earning the Presidential Volunteer Service Award Gold Level." And it's signed by Barry Feingold, President Spilka, and the Clerk. So that is from the Senate. And this one is from the House. And so it says, "Be it known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Aiden Stone in again recognition of your dedication and service to your community through Debbie's Treasure Chest and your Presidential Volunteer Service Award." And it's signed by the Speaker of the House and by myself and Representative Lynn, who couldn't be here this evening. So thank you so much for all of this all.
Next up, we'll have the Chair of the School, whoa, serving is the Chair tonight. Oh, boy. The Vice Chair of the School Committee, Andrew McDevitt, is going to present a citation on behalf of the school committee.
So I'll just read it very quickly. This is presented to Aiden Stone by the North Andover School Committee and the Public School Administration for your outstanding service volunteering with Debbie's Chest. And congratulations, we're very proud of you. And I know your parents, your grandparents are very proud of you as well. And I don't know, I don't think we've ever had a, I've been here 11 years. I don't think I've ever seen a student get this award. And do you know him?
I certainly don't recall that. And I certainly don't remember anyone getting awards from state senators, state reps, the President, this gold award. School committee.
The Governor's Proclamation is also on the way.
The Governor's Proclamation. Principal Jackson's here. Congratulations.
So if I could grab his mom, stepdad, grandparents, representatives. Right this way, follow me. The public business must go on. All right. Is this junior or is he a senior?
Junior.
Junior, junior, yeah. That's pretty amazing.
That is pretty amazing.
Yeah. All right. We are going to continue on with consent agenda items for the minutes for May 11th, 2023, and May 16th, 2023 as well. We can take them together or separately.
Mr. Chair, I move.
That we accept the minutes of both May 11th and May 16th as presented in the packet. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
I have one item. It does have Ben Abbott in attendance and not in attendance.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
So if it looks in attendance, it lists Ben Abbott, but then not in attendance, he's listed again.
Was not in attendance. Nora was not here.
Nora was here.
At the last meeting, were you not?
She was here.
You were, Ben was not, okay.
So I will remove Ben from and bring these back to the next, or you can accept that with that minor.
We can accept that with the update if there's anything else. Sorry, I do remember you were here. Ben Skid. All right, any other updates? All right, we'll do roll call. Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. Coney?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So we are 4-0. All right. Best part of the night, Ben and Nora.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Ben Abbott. I'm a junior at the high school and I'm here to start off the student report for tonight. Spring sports are pretty much over. We have a couple of teams in the playoffs. We have boys and girls outdoor track, boys volleyball, boys and girls lacrosse, girls tennis, boys baseball, girls softball. And all of those teams will be competing in the playoffs next week. So good luck to all of them. The end of the year, teacher superlatives were pushed by the Student Council. We have superlatives like most inspiring, most likely to call you out, and best shoe game. I think that was just a fun thing to do with seniors especially before they left. Coffee House is on the second, or the second Coffee House is on the second to last day of school, on June 15th. We have a wide range of student musicians performing. Clubs like Student Council, Science Team, and Dungeons and Dragons are all wrapping up their year with banquets and elections and appointing new leaders for the next year. The Cultural Diversity Association Night was last week, I believe. We had a number of affinity clubs, like the Muslim Student Association, the Jewish Student Union, the Black Student Union, the Gender and Sexuality Alliance, the Asian Students Association, the Portuguese Heritage Club, the DESI Club, the Latino Club and the Slavic Club on attendance. It was a good night. I think it was attended by about 100 people, maybe 150. And it was just, it was good to see the diversity that North Andover High School has to offer. Student involvement in town meeting was also very inspiring. Many students were involved in the passage of the plastic bag ban, specifically many students involved in the Environmental Club and in AP environmental classes, as well as students were also involved in the push to pass a measure that limited the sale of animals in North Andover from breeder mills. And I also would like to congratulate Aiden Stone on that prestigious award. Like Ramos said, he is an example to us all. So that's it for me.
Hi, everyone. My name is Nora Elkhadiji. I'm a senior at NASS. Good to be here one last time. Yesterday, the 24th, the Mental Health Awareness Club at NASS hosted a Mental Health Awareness Day, which I believe it was the first of its kind, which included guest speaker Diana Katikaris, which tells us her story. And then they also had a setup of certain events and vendors in the gym, which I believe was open to the public, and it included the fire department, the library, community programs. It had a service dog, as well as a few stations for events such as like yoga. I know there was one for ceramics, origami, things like that. And I personally, I think I did a really good job executing the night. So shout out to class officers Tasso Pagiatakis, I'm sorry if I mispronounced that, Alex Miller and Gina Ballow, who are the officers of the Mental Health Awareness Club, as well as the advisors, Mr. Di Stefano and Mr. Saravia. And then, secondly, today was pretty sweet, or pretty bittersweet. My bad.
No sweet.
See where my mind is? It was pretty bittersweet for NASS seniors because it was our last day of classes. So it did mark the beginning of Senior Week, which I'm looking forward to. Yesterday, we were all bus to Faneuil Hall after school and we were given vouchers for local businesses and we got to spend a few hours there together. Tomorrow is York Beach and Foster's Clam Bake. This coming Tuesday is Apex Entertainment, which is laser tag, as well as an arcade, as well as graduation practice and scholarship night for those who are invited. Wednesday is Senior Prom at the Daverin Sport Yacht Club, as well as the Grand March. Thursday is Awards Night. And then finally, Friday is Graduation and SOS Night, which goes from midnight until around 5:00 in the morning, I'm pretty sure. So that concludes our presentation. Thank you for having me with us one last time and good luck to the future representative, whoever it is. Thank you.
All right. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions? All right, Mr. Hicks?
Mr. Abbott, how was History Day?
History Day is.
How was it? You had, did you present?
It's in about two weeks.
It's in two weeks? Okay, I'll hold that question.
Yep.
I'm sorry. I thought it happened in the meantime. My bad memory, sorry. Good luck.
Yeah, but we're very excited.
Awesome.
Yep.
At the next meeting, I want to hear an update. And Nora, thank you so much. You've been amazing, a great representative, so eloquent and outstanding young woman. And you're going to do fantastic things in Texas next year, right?
Yes, San Antonio.
San Antonio. So best of luck. Congratulations on graduating.
Yes, and thank you to all of you for being so kind and supportive. I feel like every time we're about to present, we hear it's the best part of the night. So thank you so much, Mr. McDevitt and Ms. Petrowski, who is in here today. So thank you so much.
Ms. Coney?
Again, congratulations, Nora. It sounds like you have an exciting week ahead of you. And I know we'll all be cheering you on as you walk down the stage at graduation. So congratulations and thank you both for the presentation very nicely.
Same for me. Congratulations. Good luck to you next year in Texas. Bring a lot of not warm clothing. Gets warm down there. And thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Again, thank you so much. And it's always just exciting to hear, you know, the number of activities that I think go on, you know, with Senior Week. And last year, my son was a senior and it just seems like a blur to kind of, you know, every day was something planned. And I think it's a really fun way to just celebrate you guys and for you to be together and one last time and one last week with everything. So enjoy and we'll see you on Friday night. Well, I'll see you at the Grand March, but then Friday night too.
Yes.
All right. That's like the best part. So, all right, awesome.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Thank you.
You don't know by now?
One day I want to, I want to see if they stay just a minute.
Wait, why are they here? All right, Dr. Gilligan.
All right. I'd like to introduce Cheryl Bazak and then I'll have her introduce her team. We're here tonight for the annual health update and it's first on the agenda here in the superintendent's report. So, welcome.
So I have both high school nurses with me, Jess Nidamia and Maura Gudrow, and one of the middle school nurses, Kathleen Pease, who are going to talk with us tonight. So thank you for having the nurses come to present a health report every year. The last couple of years were mostly COVID numbers, so it's nice to get back to a more traditional, regular health report. We're really lucky in North Andover to have the most professional, caring nursing staff. They are, they can handle any emergency. They're very qualified and they truly care about our community and our students. So I'm so proud of the whole team and we're really lucky to have them. So I'm going to start with the number of health offices. It's on the next slide. So this was as of last Saturday, that rainy day, and I pulled the numbers. We actually have a new electronic health record system this year, which was another project that all the nurses learned and they adapted rapidly and we were able to pull all the information. Now, this information goes to the state at the end of the year. So this is preliminary. We'll be over 50,000 visits by the end of the year. The number of scheduled and PRN medications, schedules are daily medications like psychotropic medications, insulin, anticonvulsants. And then PRN medications are things that are as needed, like analgesics and antihistamines. 9,882 delivered treatments. These are our G2 beads, our blood glucose monitoring, and seizure observations. We have 35 students with seizure disorder and a few in our medical support classroom that require a lot of observations. And a thing that is really great and the reason we, one of the major reasons we want to have nurses in school is to be able to have students go back to class. And we have a 95% return to class rate. So of our 48,000 visits as of today, you know, more than 2,500 have gone back to class. So that's, I mean, only 2,500 have been dismissed, whereas 95% have gone back to class. And of course, parents' communication is extremely important because parents, of course, want to make sure that their students are safe in schools. And I think we've established that clearly with our parents and the number of times that nurses speak with parents on a daily basis. Next slide. Here's a list of our healthcare needs that we have in the district this year. The number of allergies continues to go up every year. We have over 200 students that have EpiPens. Asthma stays about the same year to year. The cardiac conditions have increased. We usually run about 30, 35 students with cardiac conditions and it has increased over the last year. 15 students with diabetes. There's another slide coming up where we're going to talk to how how important that is and how the needs that we have in our school with our students with diabetes. I mentioned the seizure disorder students. Of course, anxiety, as you can imagine, has been increasing. I looked back, I think it was 2014 or 15 where we had 153 students reported that. So it continues to go up. I think right before COVID, we're in the 300 range and now we're here at 453. And another number that has increased is the number of students with feeding tubes. So that's another, one of the treatments that nurses do throughout the day for six of our students in the district. Next slide. So I broke this down by systems and these are the number of visits in that category. So in our electronic health record, when a student comes in, the nurse will categorize the type of visit. So our behavioral health visits are things like reassurance and check-in. And if anybody wants to jump in, they can. The endocrine visits, you can see, are very, very high. That's our 15 students with diabetes. The GI visits would be the tube beads that I mentioned, students that come in with stomach aches. Musculoskeletal, that's your assessments of rolled ankles or broken bones or any kind of musculoskeletal assessment. Neurological, that would be students that come in with headaches, concussion management. And of course respiratory is your ENT, air nose throat assessment, listening to lungs, your students with asthma, and any kind of respiratory infections. And then.
Allergies.
Allergies, right now. So many allergies right now. And then skin integrity, that's your abrasions and some of wound care. We have had 19 911 calls this year. The first three months were a little bit scary. We had 13 at the middle school. It has luckily slowed down there. But one comment I'd make about the 911 calls this year, they have been like really, big deal. Like really, we had a femur fracture, a hip dislocation. We've had, we administered and saved, you know, lives of three students with EpiPens. We had syncope episodes. So it was a really busy start to the school year for all of our nursing staff. And they should really be commended because they're the only medical person in the building and they all are so trained and can remain calm and really know how to handle emergency situations. And, you know, it's really great to have them. Next slide. So caseload is the number of students in a building. And I just, on this slide, just wanted to point out that it's not necessarily the same caseload and workload because the middle school, as I mentioned, they have six students with diabetes. They give out 25 meds at lunchtime. They had all, you know, a lot of 911 calls this year. And it can change, depending on the acuity in each school, it can change. So I sometimes have to move staff around. A small elementary school, if you have complicated conditions, can require, you know, more than one nurse sometimes. So I just wanted to point out the number of visits by school and how they trended so far this year.
So these are, these are visits per school?
These are visits per school. So the top red line there is the middle school.
We're overachievers.
So frequent flyers, right? Yeah, you can say that.
We think we might be pretty warm and welcoming.
Yes. So, you know, luckily we have a grant and I was able to pull a person from the grant to be a third person, but just a couple of days a week. So we, you know, next year, we have a part-time person that is covering maternity leave, but next year she'll be available. But, I mean, four of the students with diabetes are going to the high school. So this, this might change next year.
Right.
Because every school's busy, but it was really exceptional this year at that school. And the next slide, Kathleen Pease is going to talk a little bit about what.
This is, this is a slide that demonstrates some of the things that keep us busy in the middle school. So we have six students who are type 1 diabetics. And we, because of progress in technology, our students all have CGM, so continuous glucose monitoring. So they wear a monitor and we get the feedback in our office. So these six students are monitored by us from 7:20 when they get there until they leave and, or until we shut off our iPad. So we have basically telemetry in our office. The students' names are covered, but the numbers in the black indicate what their current minute to minute, well, it updates every three minutes, continuous blood glucose numbers are. We have doctor's orders that tell us what their target is, so then we can watch them. But then if you look at the arrows, it even indicates which way they're trending. So, you know, school nurses is taking care of kids and sending home sick kids, but our real true goal is keeping kids in school and in the classroom. And having this technology to be able to anticipate what's happening and then we're also balancing that with, oh, this student is going to gym and then has wellness as well. Or this student is, has just come in late or was. So with diabetes, you can have very frequent glucose changes and things that influence that are stress, illness, hormones, and growth. So in the middle school, like, we're like, check, 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 right?
It's a trifecta.
Right. We were born for this, right? There's so much growth and development, but it's, it's an especially challenging time for our type 1 diabetics and their families because there's no doing it right or wrong. You could do one thing one day and get one result and the next day, a totally different result. So they really do need continuous monitoring. But this information, you know, from when I started, we could have a student who was hypoglycemic with a low blood sugar. They would come to our office and we would treat them with fast-acting glucose tabs. But then we had to wait 15 minutes to see where they were and draw more blood. And if it wasn't exactly where we wanted, then it was 15 more minutes. So that's one kid with one dip missing at least a half hour. Never mind how it feels to have low blood sugar and not being able to concentrate or high blood sugar. And then the graphs on the right, the bottom one, so the gray is sort of our target zone, right? So that kid had a, had a, had a great day, like a little bit of high, a little bit, a little bit in general, safe. And you need to have a steady blood sugar to be able to concentrate and learn and behave and feel well in class. But the graph above, so you can sort of see the dip. That's when the student was coming to school and then went on a field trip, went super high. And then those dotted lines is on the bus to the field trip. We send nurses with our students with special diagnoses and type 1 diabetes is one of them. So thankfully, if you can see the point in the bottom or in the pink, that, that blood sugar hit about 40, which is dangerously low. So the fact that we have the ability to monitor them and keep them safe when we're sort of off campus and have a nurse right there to respond is, I feel really proud of the work that we do with these students and that we're able to keep them healthy and normalize them in class and they're able to participate in all ways. So this is just an example. So we have six students. We see them in the morning. We, we work with them to cover their insulin and carb ratio at lunch. And then sometimes we see them in the afternoon. If they're having a great day, we might not see them at all. Or if they're having a rough day, we may see them five or six times. So it is. So it is a, a lot of work, but it's also a great way for us to, we have very special relationships with most of these students and families. So this is just an example of the endocrine visits at, at the middle school.
That's amazing.
Any questions?
Back, back up a slide or two. So sports injuries, do they figure into the, into the data here?
Musculoskeletal.
Okay, so if someone's hurt, you know, at a practice or whatever, do they typically use-
Well, practices are usually after school, so we may see them the next day. So, or they may come in with an injury sore, or they may have hurt themselves at school in gym class or PE. But usually, practice things, there's coaches and trainers, but we would see them the next morning.
It's not separated out in the data.
So do you get involved, someone, say there's a, just as an example, say there's a concussion, right, at a practice? You'll find out about it in the, you guys will find out about it the next morning, right?
We have a great relationship with the trainer and the athletic department, so we all keep in constant communication about that. Or if someone comes in and said, hey, you know, this happened over the weekend, I was skiing, I'm not feeling well, I got diagnosed with a concussion. If they do a sport, we'll let, we'll let the athletic department trainer know. Then we follow up with the return-to-play protocol per the state guidelines and keep track of all of that.
And we track it for the state, and the state wants us to track every concussion and whether it was, happened during a school event or outside of school. So at the end of the year, we are required to submit that information. So that we track closely.
Good. Thank you.
With CGM, are you able to see it? You see it live, so that if you notice something, you can, do you like call down to a teacher and say, hi, can you send so-and-so down to check, so I can check on them, or?
Yeah, so students with CGMs have cell phones because that's how the data is given to them, and then that's how it's, they share it with us and with their parents. So it depends on the student. Some kids, so we'll text sometimes because they might have a, they have their phone anyway for monitoring, because they may not want the phone to ring. Other kids are fine with it, and the phone will ring, and they'll be like, oh, he's walking to you now. Or, so growth and development, middle school is just the sixth graders to the eighth graders. So the sixth graders were like, where are you? And then the eighth graders text, I took two tabs, like, I got it, right? So that we begin the self-management, and that's part of the growth, depending on when you were diagnosed and what your experience is. But when they come to the high school, it's a much different setting. So our, one of our goals is working with these kids to recognize highs and lows and appropriate treatment. But in the middle school, we still really double-check their treatments. So, but we will call in the classroom or text, or walk to the gym, or, or do whatever has to be done so we can connect with them and get them appropriate treatment.
That's amazing. Thank you.
Shall I?
Thank you.
All right. Next slide. So the nurses, you know, they don't, they weren't busy enough with all that they do. They took on their professional practice goal to become certified CPR instructors. And so on our professional development day in January, twelve of our nurses became instructors. Because as you know, you know, in two thousand seventeen, we had the, you know, law to have AEDs in buildings, have medical response plans, and having a nurse as an instructor in every building allows them to train all the staff that's on the crisis team. We have a hundred coaches, because then a year later in two thousand eighteen, AEDs are required on all athletic events and all coaches, and are required to be certified. And the community program staff, about forty people are, also have to be certified. So this, I have to shout out to Kathleen Pease because once you become an instructor, you also have to have observations. And Kathleen has observed all of the nurses do all of their classes. She just was at Franklin School today, doing observations for the Franklin School nurse who did her first CPR class. And next week, she'll be at the AB-ECC, and she watched the high school nurses Monday and Tuesday. They certified all the ninth graders. So, yeah, so any staff that's interested in becoming certified, we can offer that. So not only did she do all of that, but the sixth, sixth grade students also are certified or they are given a, a class. And because the seventh and eighth graders missed it during COVID, Ms. Kathleen Pease did sixth, seventh, and eighth grade this year. So she has a passion for this, this training, and she's going to, well, first I'll tell you, there's twenty-five AEDs in the district. Do you know where the one is in this building? Does everybody know? It's right there.
Right off this hallway.
Yes, right in the hallway.
I've walked into it.
Right.
And because we now have twelve certified instructors, we are now a designated basic life support center. And that allows us to distribute cards, certification cards, and do more training. So it's, it's really great to have.
I personally experienced that training this spring.
You did. Kathleen wants to talk a little bit more about CPR.
Yeah, I just wanted to take this opportunity to make everyone aware of the changes that American Heart has made. When I first became a nurse, it, learning CPR was very complicated, and it was like, it felt like it was, if it's Tuesday and your victim has blonde hair, do it this way, you know? And they've really streamlined it and made it more user-friendly for laypeople, which is so important because, you know, that, that football player should play the lottery because, yeah, he, he is the luckiest person alive to have had his event happen in an NFL stadium. Because one of the things we talk about is the importance of immediate treatment, right? So they were there and they staffed him, and they shocked him multiple times. I mean, if you look at data for a situation like that, really, I would expect the outcome to be very different. And we're grateful that he's now working with American Heart Association to get the word out. And American Heart is pushing hands-only CPR, so a lot has changed, and they look at all the data and the outcomes, and then they come back and create new guidelines. So we recently got new guidelines. It used to be ABC, so airway breathing, circulation, and now it's CAB, so compressions, emphasis on hard and fast compressions. So we just wanted to tell a little bit about, the, the biggest question that we get asked at CPR is, how do I know who to help? Because I don't want to give CPR to someone who's napping or meditating or otherwise laying on the ground with their eyes closed. So American Heart has mainstreamed that, and so the emphasis that we do in our training is about responsiveness. So you check on someone hard and fast tapping, like, no one, we're not saying like, sorry to bother you, are you okay? But it's, are you okay? Are you okay? And then we look for responsiveness. So do they open their eyes? Do they talk? Do they move their arms or otherwise respond? And so the American Heart has now broken it down, so it's like an algorithm, are they responsive or not? And if they're unresponsive, then we check for breathing, and then we deliver CPR. So it's much more clear-cut, and we find that in our training that staff members are, just feel better. It's more comfortable, it's more understandable.
And even the ninth grade, when we did it, they really responded very well. We did about a hundred and ninety students this, this week, and we asked for feedback. And, and they said, you know, I really understood it and what you were saying, and I think it was because they removed some of those elements that were stumbling blocks, that people were trying to remember numbers and times, and now it's more streamlined, it makes more sense, so it makes it easier to deliver that care when it's needed.
And then, this is an example of one of our new mannequins. So we used to have some very plastic, it was a chest and a rib cage, but I just want to show you this.
What's a cord, sorry.
What's that?
I was just saying, what's a cord?
Oh, thank you.
We do have nurses here, but. Do you need a volunteer?
So when we find our landmark, which is the lower half of the, the rib cage, we're going to be on the breast bone and above the zoidboi process, which is that sort of free-floating notch where, where you land, but we talked about that part. Oh.
I can hold this.
This may be the first time Mrs. Pease is needing a microphone.
Yes. But your heart is about two inches, so we compress two inches because we need to act as the heart, squeeze out the blood. The blood goes to the organs, prevents cell death and damage, and then recoils so that the heart can fill up with blood again and then go out. So. We used to tell people how to do this, and we would watch them. But if, you can see, so this is my rate, which is too slow, so it's a steady red. That's flashing red, so I know that's too fast. I'm looking for green. So if you guys would sing Staying Alive for me, it would probably keep my rate. But so this is so that students and participants in our class can tell that they're doing right, so this feedback. So I really feel so grateful that our district and our town has invested in this new equipment because it really changes the way that we teach, and it changes the experience for the people that are in the class.
That's amazing.
That's all.
I, I was going to ask, ask if you still, they recommended staying, singing Staying Alive.
It's a playlist. Enough. I might just have to wrap a little something. The new American Heart video that we show says, you know, there is a song that has the right beat to help you do that. However, if you do not want to hear that song, another playlist has been made available to you. So Google American Heart Association playlist, and it gives thirty different songs that you can do your compressions. I have a very, I can only remember so many things, and Staying Alive is a good mantra for us while we're doing our compressions.
Taylor Swift had her concert recently at Gillette, and it came out that her song Man was, The Man was up there with that. So we played it for our students. They all thought that was unbelievable, it was the best. We did go back to our old Staying Alive, but, so it was really fun for the kids to be able to connect with that as well.
That's great.
Amazing. With the AEDs, they're in every building, right? Other than the nurses, do we have multiple people in each building that are certified in using the AEDs?
Yeah, so that's what, that's what we did. So today at Franklin School, there were fifteen people trained.
It's part of the CPR training. Sixth, sixth grade is an introductory, so we want them to know what an AED is and that they're in the building and knowing that it, what it does, but we don't have them do the hands-on practice. And we talk about the hands-only compressions, but then in, in the ninth grade, they do. And then in our training, so anyone who does the training with us, it's CPR and AED along with airway obstruction. So because a respiratory arrest can lead to a cardiac arrest, and then you need the other skills.
And, I mean, the dummies are the, are great, they're so much better than the rescue ants that I used to instruct on. Are, are AED devices of the same high quality?
Our devices are, yes, because we have eight new ones this year.
Fantastic.
Replace them often.
Thank you.
Cheryl's done an amazing job with the AED management, particularly working with the town as well.
Do we have a feeling for how many staff are trained in each building?
So I will have that at the end of the year, but we, we have to be close to three hundred or so at this point.
So many of our, our nurses just became instructors, like, we had a class at Atkinson today, and we're doing AB-ECC. So that's like twenty-five to thirty people added on, but then every school, the nurse has done training, so, and then coaches, and then community programs, we do.
Community programs is forty right there, and we do them.
Well, I know about the coaches because I was, I was at one of those.
Right, right, I remember.
And it's a hundred percent with the coaches, right?
Yes.
It's one hundred percent. But I was just curious if we, it would be good to know, like, at each building, is it thirty percent of the staff?
So the state recommends that we have at least five per building, and we, of course, exceed that in every building.
Okay.
That's awesome.
Oh, thank you. Good. Yeah, excellent.
So we have a comprehensive medical response plan, and we have crisis teams in every building. So it used to be you had to go to the fire station on a Saturday at nine AM to get certified, and they have just made it so easy. And I can't thank these folks enough. They serve as a crucial link to, between family schools, healthcare providers, community resources. And they not only take care of students, they take care of staff as well. They'll check staff blood pressure. You know, we know what they did during COVID. But most importantly, you know, when I was a principal, we had two kids choke. I've never had two kids choke, one with a strawberry completely lodged, turning blue. The students had just had choking, Charlie, and, and the student made the universal sign for choking. Students alerted the teacher, teacher sent them down, and she did the Heimlich and saved the student's life. Just a week later, a kid had choked on a carrot. So I've never had anyone, I heard about choking on healthy food, but he had choked on it, and then it had gone into his, aspirated into his lung. And so as someone who's had a student in the Northern Public Schools for many, many years, who has a life-threatening nut allergy, tree nuts, bees, the works, it can turn like that. And these guys were very lucky to have such professional, talented, and dedicated nurses in North Andover. And Cheryl is the team captain, leader, has been remarkable, and I'm just grateful we have them.
I have two more slides.
Oh.
I was letting you keep going. Two more slides. Jess is going to talk about the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which we've done at the high school every two years.
Yeah, so those of you who don't know, Youth Risk Behavior Surveys is a set of health surveys developed by the CDC. We can kind of, you know, pick and choose from the questions and kind of tailor them, and we definitely take parent feedback into that. But essentially, these surveys help us track behaviors that can lead to poor health outcomes in our high school students. So I have only been a nurse at the high school for two years. This is my first year doing it. What I loved was, we just did our survey, and then we were able to take real-time information. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but essentially, we realized that a lot of kids admitted at the high school that social media impacted their mental health negatively. So then we were able to take that information, and at the mental health fair yesterday, Ms. Gudrow and I set up a table, and our focus was on social media and its impact, and how to help the kids do sort of like a digital detox or taking time away if needed. So it was awesome to have that real-time data of what the kids were struggling with and to put it into practice to really help our kids and our community. These are just some positive trends that we noted from this year's survey compared to other years. So twenty-five percent of our high school students reported that they're, they feel like their mental health is poor during the past thirty days, which twenty-five percent isn't a great number. We, we could definitely get that down, but it has drastically improved. It's down from thirty-five percent in the prior survey, and the mass average is thirty-two percent currently. So nine percent of our students admitted to seriously considering attempting suicide. That's down from sixteen percent in the previous three surveys. Mass average is fourteen and a half, so we're doing good there. Vaping is always a hot topic, and eight percent of our students admitted to using vape products during the last thirty days. This is down drastically. Look at twenty-seventeen, it was twenty-three percent of our kids said they admitted to that, and it's just kind of been slowly trickling down, and mass average right now is eighteen percent, so we are below that. Nineteen percent of our students admitted to drinking at least one drink of alcohol in the past thirty days, and that's down from twenty-six percent and a mass average of twenty-two percent. And this one I absolutely love, it filled my heart when I read this. Seventy-three percent of our students feel that they have a teacher that they could go to in school if they had a problem or were struggling, and that is just incredible, and it speaks to the staff at the high school, and we are on par with the mass average of seventy-four percent. So essentially, the goal is to be able to look deeper into the risk and protective factors of certain student populations at our school. So it's really good stuff.
I have a couple of questions on this one.
Is this an optional survey for students?
Yes.
How many of our students filled this out?
I think it was eight hundred and ninety-four.
Eighty-five percent.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the questions go out ahead of time, so parents can view them, and a lot, you know, we did get a good amount of parents that did opt their children out, but I would say a, most of the kids did the survey, and it's anonymous, it's, you know.
Do students have the option of filling it out without a parent looking over them or looking at their answers, like, having it completely confidential?
We do it during school, it's during advisory.
Okay.
And, and students can choose not to do it that day as well, even if the parents don't opt them out, a student can opt themselves out.
If they're uncomfortable.
Can you say you got eighty-five percent?
I think so. I'll, I can get to the exact numbers, but I don't have them in front of me.
How many total questions are on the survey?
Gosh, I don't know.
So we did try to shorten it, and that's, and so we met as a team. I mean, the guidance counselors, the SEL director, the nurses, what, what questions do we, do, should we keep? We definitely use the CDC DPH questions, so we have continuity from year to year, but we did leave out, like, there was a lot of questions about nutrition, how many carrots do you eat a day, how many bananas? So we took out some of that because we weren't doing anything with that. So we took out some of that because we weren't doing anything with that. We already take growth numbers and we already have BMI, so we took out types of questions like that, but we wanted it to be a little bit short, but it did take the, I think it was twenty-five to thirty minutes it took for students to complete.
It's great to see some, some trends in some of these areas.
So just a, a quick question, it looks like we're doing this, um, in odd-numbered years, or is that just where we kind of pull the number?
That's, that's when the state does it as well.
So they only do it every two years?
Yes, every two years.
Okay, cool. Um, and then obviously these are great numbers and, you know, they're, they're trending in, in a positive direction. Are there any numbers that were concerning that?
We would have put them up here.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay. All right. Sorry.
Tobacco. That could, the.
Tobacco's very low, two percent or less even.
Wow, that's great.
Right.
I love that the vaping number has come down so drastically in the past couple of years. That's, that's good. Do we, I know we have data comparing our, um, ourselves to the rest of, of mass, do we also have the data to compare ourselves to the, to other schools in the area? Or do they, they don't, they don't disaggregate it that way?
So if you, uh, some schools publish it on their websites and we could compare because most schools do use the same questions.
Got it.
Um, on the next slide, if you don't have any more on this, the last grant, the Mass Call Three Grant, we just started receiving that this year and that grant is doing just what you asked. They're trying to compare communities and see what we can do to help. Uh, they want to specifically focus on substance misuse, vaping and all prevention-oriented type, um, activities. And we are just starting, we developed a team at the middle school and high school just this last month because we get twenty thousand dollars a year for five years and we wanted to use our twenty right away. Um, and we can buy a curriculum and we're, uh, I think next Wednesday is our first, like, we're gonna train staff on the program, um, Catch My Breath?
Catch My Breath.
Catch My Breath and also use it for students that are caught vaping instead of suspension, maybe giving them a program, so we're working on that now and now we have some funds to do that. So that's, um, that's a, a great grant that we just started getting this year. And it's a community grant, it includes Lawrence, North Andover, Methuen, Andover and Haverhill. So those five communities, in, in order to get that grant, we had to share YRBS data. Another good reason to do the, the, um, the survey, that's the word, um, is because it's often used to get grants. Uh, we used the survey to get the second grant on here, the SBHE, which is the Behavioral Health Grant. Again, we needed to submit great, um, data for that as well, a lot of, um, district data. This is, that behavioral health grant we just received also within a month. On July first, we'll find out if we have it for next year. It's a large grant, it's a hundred thousand dollars and it will fund a behavioral health specialist. So that would be our SEL director, that person will report to them. And again, it'll depend on what the voting is and if the budget, what the state budget is and if they're gonna fund it. We've been told it's highly likely, so we got a small amount for the month of May and June and our guidance, um, and SEL team, um, started an after-school program so that we can use this small amount of money because why not? And they're working with some of our higher need students to help with the transition and with some anxiety, um, as they move to next year. It also allowed us to buy equipment for our program rooms, um, that the SEL team, um, was so happy, it was like Christmas. So that was a great grant, a lot of us worked on that, um, to get that. And then the first grant on this slide, the Comprehensive School Health Services Grant, we've had for about twenty years. And this is the grant that allows us to do all of the extra, um, activities that the nurses do, or actually even their daily activities, to be able to do care coordination, for nurses to go to IEP meetings. It funds two part-time nurses that aren't, can't supplant, they can't be a sub-nurse, but they can cover for nurses while they do screenings because in addition to all the other stuff we talked about tonight, nurses do vision, hearing, postural screening, expert screening, um, as well as health education. Our elementary nurses, as you mentioned, teach choking Charlie, sun safety, dental, hand washing, hygiene, nutrition, um, I think, I think that's it. And actually every visit.
Puberty night for the parents.
Puberty night, that's right. That's right. So that, that's a very valuable grant, um, that we've been able to keep and, uh, we've, our application, it does extend for five more years. Again, it depends on the bu- budget, but that's eighty thousand dollars a year. That's also paid for like the CPR instructor classes, because that was three hundred dollars a person and it did buy some of our mannequins. So that grant, um, is, is, we want to keep that one going. Questions about the grants?
This is, I know your next one is teamwork.
Next one is our, the picture of the team, because we work so hard, um, we also are extremely supportive of each other. This group, if, if you notice, some of the people are from, they have retired already and they come back and they come to every event that we have. We'll have a, an end-of-the-year event as well, but, I mean, the nurse is the only medical person in the building, they're kind of on an island sometimes. Some of our schools have two nurses, middle school, high school and the A-Bac, but some of the others are, they're just the, that's, you know, so they call each other a lot during the day, you know, just somebody to, to bounce things off of, am I doing the right thing? But so supportive, so professional, um, we're really lucky. I'm in awe when I walk around and see the caring that's provided, the, and, and the, um, I don't know, the intelligence, like everything that they, they, how they work with students, how they talk to parents, how they talk to staff. I mean, I think they're very well respected in our, um, schools and the community, so I just want to thank them all and I think we're lucky. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Couldn't have said it better myself.
Any questions or?
Um, comments, I, my, my son sees, uh, Nurse Fuller every day and she has been amazing and I, I have a feeling that she is just one of many who are equally amazing, so I, I feel safe and comfortable and happy that he gets to go to school and have the care that he needs to be able to focus in class. So I'm very thankful for, for her and the staff that, um, allowed that to happen. She goes above and beyond, uh, to make sure that he feels good, so thank you very much for having an entire team that does that for so many kids.
I do have one more slide.
No, David? That was the last one.
I mean, because I have to thank this team as well and the administration because we do receive a lot of support. Um, I know Dr. Mealy's not here and we do joke every year that, uh, he's never said no to me when I ask for something. We don't ask for a lot because we're lucky that we apply for grants and get most of them, um, but we are very well supported and feel that way, um, our whole team does.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Coney?
This is wonderful. Thank you for putting this together and, and, you know, giving us an overview of, of the hard work that you put in throughout the year and I know, um, the students and parents and, and we all greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Same for me. I had nothing but great experiences with my three that went through here and who probably know, remember them. One, one of them was kind of a frequent flyer, I guess. Anyway, thank you for all the great work, for sure. And it was a great CPR class, by the way.
Thanks for coming.
I, I'm really gonna echo the, the comments. I mean, uh, amazing services that I think you pro- provide, uh, to our kids and, and staff as well if they, uh, happen to need it and, and are in the building. One of the things that I always, um, hear from parents, you know, especially if they've got a kid who's got a, um, a medical condition, is just, you know, there, there's, there's anxiety, right, of, you know, especially when they're little, right, and you're sending them to school and, you know, like who's taking care of them and all of that stuff. And they, they have the utmost confidence in what you guys do and how you care for these kids. I mean, I know that they're not your own, but they are your own when they're, when they're in the building and that's really how you kind of treat them, um, which is just absolutely amazing and, and the community, I think, recognizes, um, how hard you work and how, um, how compassionate you are. I mean, you're nurses, so I don't have to say compassionate, but, um, and the one thing and, and the last thing I'll say, and Cheryl kinda, um, or Ms. Bowers, I kinda said it, but, you know, um, every year I ask, you know, are there resources? Is there anything that you need? I know you get a, a ton of grants and you work really hard in order to get those. Um, and, and you already mentioned that Dr. Mealy kinda, um, gives you whatever you want, he's a smart man. But, you know, are there other things, you know, that, you know, you would like to be able to do for town or community? I know, you can get back to us too. I mean, I, I know it's, might, might be a loaded question, but.
No, I, I, I think in general we feel very supported. I think, um, we work well as a team, we share equipment, we share resources. When we bring questions to Cheryl, she never says no, she says, what would that look like? And so then it challenges us to sort of say, is that important? How could we make this happen? How can it work for the whole district? And, um, especially, you know, as a, as a nurse who's in a school with two nurses and then a, often a third, you know, we just appreciate that. It's recognized that it, you know, the, things have changed, right? So Liz Ma ruled the middle school alone for twenty-four years or something, but, um, times have changed and so we really appreciate that, um, the town and the administration and this group supports nursing and, um, gives us what we need.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is the last point, Coach Eldick? Yes, and I'll try to get the superintendent's report. Get a score update or something?
Nora already told us about this.
Back on track.
Do I state for the wellness of Dr. Chan or do I not?
Want to get out of order? Take it out of order, um, I'm gonna go fairly quickly with these. You wanna, um, does committee mind if we go to, let's see, eleven B and C, just so that you can get home to watch again? So eleven B is the Wellness Policy ADF, um, and it looks like a, um, after, I can't speak, after a review of the policy that no recommendation is being made, um, for any change on that.
Right, so during COVID, we did not meet as a health advisory committee, but we did meet once this year and so we've only met once and so we're not going to make any changes right now. We do have two nurses, again, going above and beyond, the two A-Bac nurses, um, are taking a class at Framingham State about wellness policies and how to make them better in your communities and so they are looking at our wellness policy and so when we meet in the fall, we will probably have some recommendations for next year, but right now we're keeping it the same.
Okay, great. All right, and that's just for us reading anyway. And then, um, annual appointment. Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, sorry.
Just, and I, I don't know the answer to this, I'm gonna ask. So when I look through, is there any reason, like, mental wellness isn't included in this? Is that, is that in a separate area?
So I think that's one of the changes that we want to add.
Okay.
Yes, that's a really good question. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, sorry, I should have asked if there are others. All right. Eleven C is the appointment of the school physician.
So Dr. Chan's been with us a long time?
So Dr. Chan's been with us longer than I've been here, so.
Me too.
Close to twenty years. And so he's asked for, um, his contract to be ninety thousand dollars this year.
And he has not had a raise, I believe.
He's never had one since I've been here.
Yeah, I, I wanna say it was seventy-five hundred, right?
It was sixty-three hundred for the last twenty years, yes.
Okay, all right. Could you just maybe tell the community why we have him?
So I don't know why Dr. Chan's not here today, but he writes all of our orders, uh, all of our, um, orders for PR and medications and he's available for consultation, um, for, for anything. And, I mean, Kathleen can talk, or Ms. Peace can talk about how often we've talked with him this year even, for some of our students at the middle school. Um, and he will speak to other physicians, he talks to parents, he, um, comes to our professional development sometimes and lets us know what's going on in the community. He's been extremely supportive, we can call his cell phone at any time, um, so I'd say we're lucky to have him for a school physician.
And I think one of the reasons why we have to have him, and correct me if I'm wrong, but even over-the-counter medicine, you can't administer.
Right, without orders.
Unless we have a school physician.
Orders, right, right.
So it's a requirement.
It's a requirement, yes.
In order for you to.
Every district has a school physician.
Okay.
And he also, um, writes our first aid plans as well, um, and reviews those.
Okay. All right. All right, questions from the committee?
So for students that need medication at school, they would be unable to have that administered by a nurse without having him sign off on it?
So only for as needed, so for things like analgesics, acetaminophen, ta, um.
Yeah.
Ibuprofen.
Great. Thank you.
And parents give us permission for that as well.
Yes.
So did I understand correctly, it's been some lower number for a long, long time?
I, I thought it was seventy-five, I, I, maybe it was sixty-three, sixty-five hundred?
It's, it has not been a raise in the entire time he's been here.
And it's like twenty years?
Yes.
Something like that? Okay. Pretty reasonable.
And I did research other communities, they're all over the place. They can be as low as five, up to twenty thousand, so I, I think what he's asking for is fair.
Okay.
That's my only question.
All right. I think that's it.
Okay.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna get back with the superintendent's report. I know they talked about the Mental Health Awareness Day. I, I just say it as much as I can, um, to the PTO president, whoever I meet with, our students the other day were remarkable in raising this awareness, the, um, student-led, uh, the faculty advises, the administration, and what I like to say all the time is, mental health has changed in terms of the stigma and, but oftentimes families think they're alone and they think they're going it alone and there's some shame or some, um, isolation with it. And if yesterday's event just connected one student with a resource, um, or someone to talk to, um, it's worth it. And this is just, uh, no one should go it alone in this world. So they did an awesome job and Camp TV had a lot of film on it, so I don't know when Brian Fraser will get that done, but.
I saw some pictures that the police department had put up and it looked amazing. It looked like it had great turnout, um, and I, I read through that, a lot of positive booths set up to really help the students, so I thought this was absolutely amazing.
Yeah. So I just wanted to mention it again and thank you to, uh, Mr. Jackson, Principal Jackson did a great job and getting, uh, the speaker not only for the students, but, uh, for the staff as well for professional development, uh, and Ms. Marks, thank you. All right. In the news, North Andover's been in the news. And just real quickly, they've been, we've been on the front page of the paper, Above the Fold one day. There's still a paper. There's two days they don't print it, but it gets delivered here. I think it's a complimentary edition. So, um, this week it was really terrific to, Above the Fold, to have our civics students, um, that, you know, went through the civics program, you saw them in action, uh, some of our high school students at town meeting, um, with the plastic bag man and the puppy mills, um, the two articles. So that was pretty remarkable. And then we were below the fold, but still the front page the other day, um, about the composting, uh, at our schools with our green teams, uh, and reducing food waste. And this all started out a few years back with Joanna O'Connell. She heads it up, uh, she came to see me and talked about another community doing it and I said, you know what? This is a great idea. It, it sounds like it costs more money, so you have to see Dr. Mealy, uh, and together they met and they met and the green team went from piloting at a couple of schools to across all the schools. And, um, it was great seeing some of our, uh, yeah, smaller, little ones on the front page. So that was terrific. In live time tonight, uh, Mr. McGravy had an announcement, uh, breaking news, that Mr. McGravy's current students will be presenting at the Massachusetts DESE State Showcase Friday, June second at Clark University in Worcester, Massachusetts. Um, so that came in, uh, tonight, uh, so really proud of them, uh, Mr. McGravy does a great job, um, so really thrilled about that. And last but not least, um, you know, the biggest event of the year in the schools, the culmination of all the work, is graduation, uh, next Friday night. And, um, you know, for our new members who haven't attended, um, as a school community And, you know, for our new members who haven't attended, as a school community member, it's really one of the coolest things, I think, that all of us get to participate in, to watch our students and celebrate with their families at Joe Walsh Stadium. So next Friday night at 6:00 PM. And I think that wraps up the superintendent's report.
All right, perfect. So we'll jump into the adjunct chair report here. I'm just gonna say one quick thing about the slick pro and the civics work with Mr. McGravy, but I know you went, I think it was Monday morning, I went, I don't know if you guys went as well. I, I mean, I was just amazed at the range of topics that these students, you know, were embarking on and just, you know, having good conversations and really in-depth kind of research. And, you know, we started this program, I think probably four years or so ago, and to see students already presenting at town meeting and, you know, making change, they can't even vote, and they're, they're having real change kind of happen in our community, I think is really pretty amazing. And I'm thrilled that there are some students going, I guess it's next Friday afternoon?
Yeah, next Friday, probably during the day.
Okay.
And you saw it here when they came this fall?
Yeah.
And it's remarkable, we're in good hands with the future with our students, so.
I'll comment on that too. So I went to two of the, two of the sessions in this classroom. I was pretty impressed with the students' presentation skills, actually, for eighth graders.
Yeah.
They were, they were, some of them were very impressive, in terms of their willingness to get up in front of the class and, you know, kind of hold your attention.
Yeah.
So kudos to Mr. McGravy for that.
That's great. All right, jumping ahead, we'll go relatively quickly, I think, with some of these, but school committee retreat. We had a Google Doodle poll that went out, and it looks like the next, the best dates really need to be probably Tuesday, the 15th of August for our retreat. It looked like everybody's agreeable to the, the afternoon. It can do the morning, it doesn't really matter to me, but people are weighing morning or afternoon for the 15th. Does it matter?
It does not matter to me.
It does not matter to me.
It does not matter to me.
All right, let's.
And it does not matter to Assistant Superintendent Marks.
Miss McHugh, does it matter to you? Yeah. You get two votes, Mrs. Marks. All right, so let's do the afternoon on the 15th of that. I know I had a work thing, I would move if I had to, but, okay, perfect. And that is, that is the only meeting that we have that is not televised. It's open to the public, but we just don't have North Andover Cam here, so, all right, perfect.
Is that done here?
It's done here.
Okay.
Typically in this room. I think one year we might have done it at the library or something, but we typically do it right here, so. All right.
Yeah, retreat might be a little, when you think of a retreat. It's a working session.
Stay outside.
No, it's hot, we're gonna be inside in the air.
It could be one of those beautiful summer days, Joe.
Right.
There's no yoga?
No, goats with yoga or whatever it is. Are we presenting the? Okay, there we go, all right. So evaluation for Dr. Gilligan, so this is always kind of a weird situation. We do Dr. Gilligan's evaluation, he's probably one, well, other than superintendents, you know, nobody really gets their evaluation kind of public, on camera, recorded. You can Google it if you want to see that your 2020 evaluation, if you will. So I don't know, Dr. Gilligan, if you, I know you had an opportunity to kind of take a look at it, if you had questions in the beginning, you want to save questions for kind of the end?
Yeah, I had a chance to review it, I just thank, thankful for the really thoughtful feedback. I have a growth mindset, we can always improve and get better. And I just feel lucky to work with a remarkable team of leaders and teachers in this district. And we can, it's been a remarkable year in a lot of ways, and we need to continue to move the needle, because, you know, it's the education that our students absolutely deserve, so. I'm really appreciative of all your thoughtful feedback, thank you.
Okay. So a couple things just about the, the process with this as well, especially for those that are newer. We established the goals for Dr. Gilligan, we kind of work with him on what those goals are, to make sure that they're kind of realistic and kind of going forward, and I know we talked a little bit about this last week, but, you know, these are the goals that we've established, so these are the things that he's moving towards, and throughout the year he provides documentation and materials that kind of show, you know, whether or not he's hitting something or kind of, you know, on target or, you know, tasked with some of those. So I don't know if we want to go through these one by one, I mean, it would probably take a decent amount of time, or if you want me to kind of just summarize, and then we can add comments if we feel necessary.
Summarize.
I thought so, all right. So the first goal was just collaboration with municipal officials and engaging residents to ensure appropriate and adequate educational facilities and funding with the future to decrease class sizes and meet the needs of all students. So 60% met and the 20%, I'm sorry, 60% met and 40% that you exceeded this target. I think some of the biggest things that kind of were echoed here really had to do with the Facilities Master Plan and trying to move that forward with that. The second goal, ongoing discussion with district and school-based teams, continuing to identify and address learning needs resulting from the pandemic, transitioning our planning and focus in the long-term curriculum and resource plan to address student needs. So 60% were that we met, or that Dr. Gilligan met, 60%, 20% was that he exceeded, and 20% that he had significant progress to this. And I think, you know, in, I'll kind of try to summarize and then obviously kind of add in, we were coming out of the pandemic, we were trying to, you know, restore funding and programs and things of, not really restore funding, but ensure that funding was kind of established as part of the general operating budget and not kind of some supplemental piece, which you've seen other towns and communities who are now having to cut positions and make modifications because they did not take the time, not the time, or have the collaboration in order to kind of bring some of that in. And so those are kind of there, that's part, part of the reason why we have basically a 5.5% increase. And at the same time that that was happening, you know, there's a great support staff, right, that kind of brings out additional curriculum to kind of just say like, hey, we're continuing to do this, right? So we didn't just say like, all right, we're kind of going back and we're kind of moving, you know, forward, we're like, okay, pedal to the metal, right? You know, we're implementing things, you know, Mr. Hicks, you know, pointed out some additional resources, wit and wisdom, right? So new curriculums kind of coming in, as opposed to just kind of going back to the way that we kind of knew things before, so.
Can I make a comment on this?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so I, in my comments here, I made a, there's somewhat of a, I didn't state it quite properly, because I, what I said was, I do think our overall performance still needs improvement, but it's not relative to the higher performing districts, it's really just relative to the standards that I see. I'd like to see an improvement, right? Where we're, in some of our places, we're in the 50s, 60s percent of, of our students meet or exceed, right, the, the standard. I'd like to think we could do better than that, right? I know it's not easy, and, and there's all kinds of challenges there, but that's just where I was coming from. And I think what I wrote is relative to the higher performing districts, what I really meant is relative to the standard.
Okay.
Just to clarify that.
Okay. All right.
Because I think we're doing pretty well relative to the other districts.
All right. For goal three, the district support, district-wide commitment to social justice and equity for all students and staff, the district will continue to create a culture that reflects, respects and embraces the voices, perspectives and differences arising from our diverse community. So 60% with that, there was significant progress, and 40% that we met that. You know, a lot of different things that were kind of identified here, you know, equity, you know, with special education and kind of moving that forward. You know, I think Mr. Brown kind of mentioned, you know, the Holocaust survivor kind of coming in as a speaker, you know, significant activities with Black History Month, you know, there's, you know, other kind of times of the year where, you know, there's awareness of what's going on from a cultural perspective. And, you know, bringing it, Ms. Petrowski mentioned, you know, different coaches, right? So different perspectives on kind of what's going on and what's happening in our area and the state and nationally as well, so. Thoughts, questions? All right, kind of keep rolling here. Ford, so this is a little bit of really our goal, which is not necessarily part of his evaluation, but it was all kind of the collective document, whether or not the school committee continues to engage in the community to advocate for the district with residents and town leaderships. So, I mean, I think we were probably a little realistic here, you know, you know, 20, 40% that we met and 60% was significant progress in this, right? And so, you know, there are definite things in terms of community chats and, you know, attendance at different meetings and events that were happening. And then, you know, tri-board meetings and just, you know, partnership with, you know, FinCom and the Select Board as well, so kind of working with that and trying to come back to in-person meetings as well. One thing that I would just kind of say, moving forward, we did it years ago, and then obviously with COVID we kind of stopped, but we used to have meetings at different elementary schools. And it, it's complicated, right, you know, because you get a NACAM there and, but, you know, like, it's really kind of a great opportunity, you know, to kind of change this room and be where the students are, and have them kind of showcase some of their work as well, so my two cents in terms of where we might go.
Yes, we are planning for robotics for the fall, Mr. Hicks. Maybe this next one, but they have not been available for any of our dates.
It's okay, I understand the complicated nature of scheduling them. And I'm sad.
Teenage schedules.
All right, overall rating, you know, for this, 60% that you met expectations, 20% exceeded, and 20% with significant progress. I'm not gonna speak, you know, for you guys in terms of just the overall piece, you know, there's different things here in terms of the benchmarks that were identified, and I'll let you guys comment if you want. I've talked to Dr. Gilligan probably five times a day, but.
General question, when, when, at what point in the year are the goals set? Is that like?
Fall.
Fall, okay.
Do we start talking about them at the summer retreat working session? Typically, it's like once we're coming back, yeah. We can talk about them whenever.
And another question.
Yep.
So are they, are they set collaboratively, or are they set by the school committee?
They're, 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 they're pretty set by the school committee, but they're in line with the district's strategic plan. I was blanking on the word there, in terms of what we're doing, right? So, you know, Dr. Gilligan and his team have, you know, a one, three, five-year kind of strategic plan.
Right, which I've seen that, yeah.
And then those goals are usually in cooperation with that to ensure that we're kind of moving towards those and measuring him on those progress, but Dr. Gilligan?
Yeah, I'd just say, I mean, it's required by DESE, so they are set on a schedule. Mr. Hicks knows well, Ms. Petrowski is here, should know well as a fellow educator. We're educated in the same way, I just, we do mine in public, and the rest are done in private. But, you know, I think what's unique about North Andover is, in most places, there's an initiative, one piece for the year, and the superintendents typically fill out a pretty basic form, and they focus on that. And, you know, having the capacity to have the team in which we do, and we've built, we've had the ability to focus on just so much, whether it's PD, staffing, equity, you name it, it has been remarkable. So what's unique here is the school committee and the superintendent work to set a shared goal. The superintendent sets his goals in collaboration with the school committee, particularly the chair and vice chair, and then the school committee sets a goal, which is, in most places, school committee sets a goal every year and then they get to it and they're like, well, we're gonna judge the superintendent in a lot of communities, but we'll get to Oz the following year. And I have to commend this group, that's something the school committee's worked really hard on here. And, you know, so, and then they're reported to the DESE. But these all are in line with the strategic plan, the school committee budget directives, you know, the school committee input, superintendent's goals, shared goals, so it's, it's unique.
It was a little challenging, at least for me, I don't know about for you, but, you know, not being here when the goals are set and then trying to evaluate how you did, kind of was a little difficult, right?
After two months.
Yeah, after two months, I mean, so I tried to state that in the comments, right? I'm making, making this judgment as best I can based on only, you know, two months and whatever I observed publicly before that, right? So it's, I mean, there's nothing you do about that, that's just, in other words, we'll be better next year. Giving you feedback.
I, I think the thing that's most important to know is, you know, there's a, the laser focus on really important items here to move the needle for North Andover are focused on. It doesn't mean that anything else falls by the wayside, like.
Sure.
You know, compliance, other goals, you know, school goals that are unique to each school and principals and teachers. So we're, we're full steam ahead and looking forward to the fall, looking forward to breaking ground on the middle school, looking forward to continuing with the staffing, and looking forward to continuing to move our kids ahead academically, socially, emotionally. And I'm just proud and humble to be able to lead here in North Andover, so.
I'm not gonna go over the next standards in detail, there's a number of questions, we all kind of evaluated them. I think the overlying, you know, theme here is, you know, it's for, basically 80%, you know, with a proficient rating, you know, exemplary on one of them, or from one, you know, basically, you know, 20%. And then there was one where I thought it went a little bit higher, the third standard, you were 60% proficient and exemplary, 40% there. Overall, the rating for the summary of everything was that it was proficient, right? So that's just kind of the average that kind of comes out. I, I think that we're, I think that it's fair, and, you know, I think, you know, there's a lot of things that are, you know, moving along and, you know, it's, I'll let, obviously the committee speak, you know, I don't think it's an easy job to be superintendent, and especially to kind of live in the town and the community that you're here. But having worked with you for as long as I have, I mean, I know how much you care about the community and the kids and the faculty and the staff that are here, and there are a lot of districts that don't retain superintendents, or see them move from a teacher to a principal to administration and kind of stay and be invested. And, and I would say yet again, I think we're lucky to have you.
Thank you, Andrew.
So, other comments or?
I don't, I don't have words tonight. Shocking, I know. No, I think, obviously, like, Dr. Gilligan, you're doing a good job in, in meeting the goals that we have laid out. I think I would like to challenge ourselves collectively to, I mean, the equity goal, I think is always relevant, but I think in terms of the first goal, I think that has been, that has been the thing for the past few years, and I, I want us to think between now and, and the fall when we set new goals, like, what's the next thing that, that we want to push ourselves on? Because reducing class sizes is, like, we've done that, which is great, and we want to maintain that, but then what, what comes next, right? And I would just like to begin thinking in those terms too. But what, how, what's next?
And I would, I would, I think, I think I put in there, I mean, your dedication and the amount of passion that you have for your position and for the administration and the students is very clear. And I think we're, we're very lucky in that aspect to have somebody who cares so much. But I'm also, I know we, together, I think we can all move that needle a little bit more, and I'm, I'm looking forward to how we can collaboratively do that and think of, think ahead of, okay, now we're doing good, let's do a little bit better, I think we can, we can do it.
So I'll, I'll say a few things, so far very impressed, and it's like a 24/7, 365 job, obviously, you know, and, and it takes a special person to be able to do that. And so I commend, commend you on that for sure. I'd like to tell you that I put as much time into this as I could, but again, I think a year from now I'll be able to provide more valuable feedback, having had a longer period to observe and work with you and so forth. I want to share one thing, kind of related to what Joe did, is, Joe stated it, which is, I do see a lot of needs coming up, you know, for the first point, you know, funding, we, we're doing great things, but, but those are not the only two schools that need, need help, right? It's not just the middle school and the, and Kittredge that need help. We've got some old, as we, you know, as you took us around to see the facilities we have, we're doing great with what we have, but we can, we need improvement in other place, we need physical improvement, I think, in those other places, and that's on us as a committee, as much as it is on you, right, to try to, try to find ways to, to improve there. So thank you.
Oh, no Pam. Well, thank you for the feedback, really appreciate it. Again, I, you know, I think that what I like about this group is, we set really aspirational goals. These, some of these things unthinkable of just a few years back. You know, the ability to add 31 teachers and the staffing, people on the front lines, counselors, teachers, special educators, you know, and the work that the teachers in this community do, they go above and beyond, and we don't want to just be above the trends and, and we compete with places that spend a lot more money. But we're, we're making a difference in students' lives, they're not numbers, they're people, and we're gonna keep pushing on my head to be success, we want it to be successful young adults, and I just thank you so much. I might have lost four words myself.
That's a good.
Yes.
Okay, so now we've reviewed it, is there a, we need to accept it, basically, which is just a vote, there's no all business, new business type of situation, so is there motion regarding the evaluation?
Yeah, I'll move to accept the evaluation as, as printed in the packet.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any additional discussion? All right, we'll do roll call, Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Coney?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
And chair vote, yes, 4-0. All right. We're a little behind, well, we're a lot behind schedule, but go quick. We're a little behind, well, we're a lot behind schedule, but, go quickly here, just so that everybody is aware, our next school committee meeting, June eighth, we will reorg. So at the last meeting, typically of the school calendar year, we reorg, so that's Chair, Vice Chair, and Clerk. So, kind of move forward for that. Two court building committee updates. Mr. Hicks, anything on the middle schools, anything happening over there?
Yeah, a lot happened, actually, this week, so, I might, I'll, I'll need a few minutes. So first, town meeting approved the money, which is great, very excited. We have a number of pre-qualified general contractors and subs, that's great, that'll help increase competition and get the bid down, or keep it competitive, which will be nice. We're, have procurement rules that we need to follow, and go, and we want a nice low bid that we are confident with, because that's the one we have to accept. We had a meeting on the twenty-third, in advance of the meeting, estimates were done by the, so the design firm hired one independent consultant to do a construction estimate, our owner's rep hired another consultant to do a construction estimate, they combined those into a document, and to see how close they were, to make sure that we're both thinking the cost is going to be the cost, they do a reconciled average if there is a difference between them. In some places, one said more for something, the other one said less or something, and then they, they have a way to figure it all out. I'm learning a lot about building projects, it's great. The long and short of it is, though, that we originally budgeted seventeen point nine million dollars for construction, the estimates are more like eighteen point seven or eighteen point eight, so it's a little bit more expensive than we were thinking. So we had to make some adjustments to how we're going to get all the things done that we want to get done. So we approved four bid, four bid alternates, and put them in priority order. What happens is, it's going to go out to bid, these parts of the project will be listed as bid alternates, that means they'll get bid on, and we'll get a price, and if the overall price then allows us to do those in that order, they get included. That's around about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of work, four hundred thousand, and then also, they took a hard look at the timeline, and this is the really exciting part, it was originally going to be a twenty-four month timeline to get work done, they now are projecting that can be done with some awesome efficiency work that can get done in eighteen months, and that's going to save us anywhere in the neighborhood from four hundred and fifty to six hundred thousand dollars, and take less time. So, that's good, and that'll get the cost down to where we want it to be. The impact of having to do the alternate bids is, we had to meet to approve them, include them in the bid package, so the bid package is going out a little later, we're scheduled to meet on July eighteenth to vote on the low bid and accept the contract. So it's a little later than we wanted originally, which would make me nervous with a two-year project of twenty-four months. However, since it can be done in eighteen months, starting a month late is going to be okay, because we still have an extra cushion in there to get things done. So I'm fairly confident that we will get the things done on time, and we'll be in the building when we want to be. So, that's all I have right now.
Any questions?
I, I think the only question I would have is, you know, I hate to say it's only a million dollars, right, but if we're over budget by a million dollars, or not over budget, but if the, the estimates came back, I'd be curious what we are thinking about possibly cutting, or modifying for that million, because I don't want to spite off our nose, and what's the expression, cut off your nose and spite of your face?
Right, so, one, the estimates that they come up with are designed to be right in the middle of the projected bids, so we hope that there's, with a good number of people coming in, I think we had ten or twelve pre-qualified general contractors, so there'll be competition, the hope is that the final bid comes in below the estimate, and we have room to do all the things. There is some contingency built in, but we don't, we of course want to leave that for contingency. And the things that are part of the bid alternate list are things that can be added back in easily in the future. Whether it's later in the project or afterwards. I pushed for vocally during the meeting, for it to happen in the project, and us to figure out a way.
Okay.
Can piggyback on that, like, you did say, though, that by acceleration, there was money to be saved, so it might not quite be the full difference, right, that, that, you know, it might be a smaller number that we're trying to recover.
And each of the alternates, we know how much each of those things are, so if it's with, so time saves us money, and then if it's below a certain thing, we can add those back in, and then we can do other things hopefully as a district to figure out the others.
All right.
Mr. Hicks, great update on that, and, you know, one of the other things is, you know, as time goes on, and if things fluctuate, we can also look at our capital projects as well.
Yeah, so that's, there's some opportunities there with capital projects to put into the town, to include those in the next year's budget to fund these things, for construction to happen at the same time, because these are smaller projects, but help us save on this particular budget.
All right, anything else?
That's it? So we'll be awarding the bid on July eighteenth.
Okay, awesome. Kittredge, the only update is, we put in basically some paperwork regarding, you know, the timeline for that, based upon a valuation of enrollment data, that's been submitted off to the School Building Association, and we're just waiting to hear back on that, but other than that, everything else is on task and target.
It's on track, and we've got one more milestone to meet coming up, is the feasibility study budget, and working with the town, we're getting that over to MSBA.
Okay, perfect. All right, no old business, now we come to new business, sorry, we're a little late. We thought eight twenty, eight, well, not too bad, eight thirty-five, not too bad. So the high school history.
I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Marks.
All right, oh, sorry.
I'm so excited.
Before we start with the high school history, I just want to let people know, a reminder, this weekend is Memorial Day, and just want to say a thank you to all those in the community who have served, and the families who have supported them. And also let people know, during the month of April, all of our elementary students wrote poems about peace, so when you leave today, you will see some of them in the hallway here. We also have the gentleman who is, is he the poet laureate now?
I think he was a former poet laureate.
Okay, former poet laureate, he came in today, and he took a number of poems, and they will be on display at the Common this weekend, so if you're there, I just want to put a plug in, the kids did a great job, and the librarians really worked hard with them, and we have a lot of great work there, so check it out if you're down there. So, moving on to high school social studies, prior to COVID, we began to look at adjusting our social studies courses based on the frameworks that came out, then COVID hit, and our whole focus was sort of switched to survival mode, and how we were going to deliver, what we had to deliver during that time. So this year, we've gotten back into that, and I would like to welcome Principal Jackson and Mr. Sheehy, our social studies department head, to discuss the changes that we are proposing.
Thanks, Lorraine. One of the great things in working in this district is, we have great collaboration, one with Ms. Marks, who's been over throughout this process to support her and Ms. Ando throughout the time here, and the gentleman to my right, Mr. Brian Sheehy, is our department coordinator for social studies, and one of the, one of the jobs they do is, they coordinate the curriculum. So he's going to take us through his presentation here, and talk about the different people that were part of it, and different stakeholders, and hopefully get people excited about some changes in social studies. All right, you, Brian.
Okay, hi, everybody. Go to the next slide. So, like Ms. Marks said, we've been talking about this curriculum shift for several years, twenty eighteen, DESI released the History and Social Studies Frameworks, which shifted some of the things that it pretty much requires. Eighth grade year in, in being the civics, or switching to civics, was the big shift. Currently, in North Andover, or pre our shift, US History One was taught at the eighth grade level. Now that it's civics, we kind of felt that there was a hole in our curriculum with no US History One, so we felt that we, a really important thing at the high school level is to, to give our students a background of US history. I mean, it's so important in understanding everyday life. So we wanted to, to kind of, like I said, curriculum shift, and offer US History One and US History Two. You can go to the next slide. So you can see the flow chart, so currently, in the ninth grade, it's World Civ One, then World Civ Two in the tenth grade, and then US History in the eleventh grade. Our shift will be, will continue with the World Civ One, our ninth grade, but then in tenth grade, we'll do US History One, and the eleventh grade will go into US History Two. And you can see all the other fun little arrows and things like that, and other electives that we will offer. We're not going to change any of our Global Thought or American Thought classes, we're still going to offer AP World Sophomore Year, and then AP US History Junior Year, and then AP Gov or other electives Senior Year. So it's just a shift to include more US history. And I think the first question you're going to ask is, well, what about World Civ Two? I think if you look at the US History Two curriculum, it really lends itself to incorporating a lot of the things that we're currently covering in US history, or in World Civ Two, into US History Two. I mean, if you start looking at the twentieth century, it's a more global history in general. So I think that this, like, this shift is really going to allow our students to get more US history, without sacrificing too, too, too much history in general. They're going to be getting more of that US history, so that they can be more informed citizens, and understand the dynamic world that they're living in, in the context of what they're going to be experiencing when they go off, and do a lot of things that you were talking about earlier, those civics projects and things like that. Next slide. There's a course shift, and you can see, that is what DESI has outlined for US History One, so it goes all the way to the Revolution through World War One, so it is a, a large chunk of stuff to incorporate, but really is important to understand those concepts, those themes, those topics, to really get a deeper understanding of our history.
Sorry, that's tenth grade, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And this will also allow us, junior year, to work on a civics project. DESI like mandates that we have to do that. We're still working out exactly what we're going to do, but the district has a great civics background in the eighth grade, we're hoping to kind of really perpetuate and continue the success that they have in the eighth grade, and bring it to the high school level, and really go deeper, and allow our students to use active voice, and, and really get involved in the community, and making a change for the better. So, one of the things that we need to do is get some resources to do this. So currently, we're using a The Americans, which was published in two thousand and two, we're hoping to update to a Savis US History textbook from, that was published in two thousand and twenty-two. And we're going to go over kind of the process of how we decided and, and why we picked Savis. So, obviously, with, with changing resources and adopting new resources, the dynamic curriculum ever-changing world, the state of adoption of the two thousand and eighteen History and Social Studies Frameworks, coupled with the discovery of numerous bias inaccuracies in the current textbook, call for us to really examine and look at what we're doing, what we have, and, because we really want to be current, we really want to keep in line with the frameworks, and we want to really recognize and acknowledge our students in front of us, and we want to give a, a very diverse voice, offer different resources, materials, et cetera. So, the first step in this, in this process was, as a, as a social studies department, we sat down, we reviewed the Massachusetts Frameworks, we looked at the guiding principles, we looked at some of the different processes that the district has in, in accepting different curriculum resources, and we examined the textbooks. We sat, we sat down, we went through them, I've got some slides coming up that'll show you some of the different questions and things that we focused on, but we did spend a whole day, as a department, going over this. And this is a document that the school system has, and some of the main objectives that we focused on when we were going through a lot of this material, was to advance the educational objectives of the school system, particular objectives of the course program, contribute towards continuity, integration, and articulation of the curriculum, to establish general frameworks for the course. Big focus is on, is making sure that we're hitting all, like, all learners, all the needs are provided for, attention should be given to gender roles in the materials, textbooks and supporting materials should lead students and their teachers beyond the textbook, and really kind of enliven their, their curiosity, so that they can explore more. That was one of the big things with the textbook that we wanted to focus on, is having students see themselves in the textbook, in a factual way, and then kind of go deeper into it, and I'll get into some of that with some of the guiding principles, but we really liked how those sources did that, or the textbook did that. They should examine history from a variety of viewpoints, I mean, that's a big point in, in the historical thinking skills that we focus on as a department. Developing the ability for students to take material, analyze it, and, and really develop their own opinions. Critical thinking skills are really important, we call them historical thinking skills, but, but the critical piece of analyzing, interpreting, and making their own conclusions is really important for us. They should have cultural diversity, and basically hit all the needs of the diverse learners that we have in this community, and we felt that the resources that we went through had that. So guiding principle two, there's a whole bunch of guiding principles in the mass frameworks, I'm going to, we're going to focus on two in this presentation, because I think that they're really important in, in really kind of pushing the source that we use. And I think that, that guiding principle number two, in Effective History and Social Studies Education incorporates diverse perspective and acknowledges that perceptions of events are affected by race, ethnicity, culture, religion, education, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, disability, and personal experience. That's really important, I know that that's really important in this district. So when we were picking a source, that was something that we focused on. DESI is, is really involved in this guiding principle number two, I know that, I've worked with, with Ruben Enriquez at DESI around some of this guiding principle stuff, so we really, as a department, value it, and I think that as a school community, we value it. So it needs to be something that we focus on, on any kind of curriculum resource. So, after the department kind of reviewed, I gave it to some, to some teachers to ask their students what they thought, and we, I had five different classes review it, and this is some, some, some bullet points on how they felt, and I can get into some, some other things that they, that they mentioned, but they felt that the textbook was factual and presented various viewpoints, I think that that is an important piece. It's such a polarized world, I think it's very important to present facts, and allow students the opportunity and space to develop their own opinions about them. The students were really excited, we gave them the textbook, you guys can take a look later, and they were really excited to see things like COVID, Black Lives Matter, gay marriage, presented in a non-bias factual way, so that, again, students can develop their own opinions and kind of see themselves. I mean, guiding principle number two asks, and, and pushes teachers to present material so that all students are seen, and, and they definitely saw some of themselves in that. There was a transgender student who, one of the teachers told me, was really excited to see that kind of stuff, and I think that that's what we want to have in our history curriculum. When students can see material that, that they can relate to, I think that that makes the, the job of a history teacher that much easier, and it engages the student. They felt that it did not portray any group or person, a person in a negative manner. One, like, one student who was Muslim, was really excited that nine eleven was portrayed in a factual manner, and didn't, it didn't criticize people who are Muslim, or it was, it was very, it was, it was, it was done in a, in a non-judge, like, judgmental way, which I thought was important, and they thought was important. They felt the language and terminology was appropriate. Again, one of the issues that we have with some of the older textbooks is terminology. The, the way that we refer to certain people has changed and evolved in the past twenty years, since we got a, last, our last textbook, so I think that, and students really kind of point that out in class, so they felt that everything in this textbook was appropriate to the current terminology. And again, another guiding principle is that the histories should teach students to think historically, and again, that's, like, that's the main focus of what we want to do, so they felt that this textbook did that. And we did go through some other books, those are a couple of the other books that we went through, we felt that, again, this one did the best job of giving diverse voice, and... and teachers, students kind of like these better, so. Other aspects of the textbook, there's, there's a lot of online resources, there's updates, there's, there's movies, there's the ability for teachers to basically kind of use the online resources as kind of a Google Classroom so that they can upload assignments, there's worksheets, there's videos, there's practice tests, there's, there's a, there's a lot of bells and whistles on this online aspect of the textbook that I think is important. The, the online aspect also does like text to read, so it really can, can fit all of our students, whether, whether they're on special ed or regular students, advanced students. I think that it does a good job of providing access to all of our students. That's just another slide, the same exact thing. Wanted to show you the guy hanging out there. Do you want to leave anything out for you? It is the last one.
We also brought some samples, so, you know, I know this is the first read, so after the meeting, if people want to take a look at the books and ask questions, you can do that as well, so.
How much?
So, that's the, that's the fun one. It's about $75,000, I think. So we were planning on getting, I think it's seven or eight copies for classrooms so that you can have, yeah, classroom sets, so that students who are in the classroom have access to it, and then just all the digital copies as well for every student who will be a sophomore or junior.
So enough copies to use in the room but not necessarily leave, so teachers don't need, so not one per student, but a class set per teacher?
Yes. It'll probably be more than what's actually in the class, I think, probably like 30, so.
Is this some, this is not the same textbook that gets used with AP US History?
No.
That, and can it be, or is it not approved by?
I don't think it's approved by the AP Board.
I don't know the particular, particular textbook, I'm excited to, to look at it. And we're talking actual book, right? Not access, like, I see there's an online stuff where like, actual book for kids to read, like copies of a physical book for kids to read.
If they would like to access that, yes.
I guess my, my, my main question is actually what, it goes back to like, why World History I versus World History II as 9th graders?
I think that our, our department felt that the ancient history was something that they valued. And I think that with the World History II, that's something that there's a lot of parallels. I mean, there's going to be some gaps that we're going to lose, and we're going to try to figure out ways to incorporate some of those other things. Like, we're probably going to end up losing like the French Revolution, but can we figure out ways to like get the French Revolution into the American Revolution? Teach like revolutions instead of just like a US? So that, like, that is one of the things that we're cognizant of, of not losing history. We want to kind of figure out ways to incorporate the things that we're quote-unquote "losing" into what we're adding.
Yeah, my wor, my worry is, is that, and not necessarily the French Revolution, but like the other things, like especially around like world civilizations, like II where kids are learning about the Middle East and, and India and China, like where, like where is that stuff going to be accounted for? Because that's, that's like, the world we're living in now is so rooted in the things in the 20th century, and I wouldn't want our kiddos to lose out on that.
So they get some of that in World Civ I. They get like the foundations of civilization, they get religion. If they were to take AP World, that AP World is 1200 to modern day, and it's the globe. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's definitely something that I, that I think we want to get into. And if you look at the US History II curriculum, you get into some of the 20th century global perspective.
And then with making that?
World Hist, World Civ I is what's currently in 9th grade?
Yes, yeah.
That's all I have for now.
Ms. Coney? Sorry.
No, yeah, so I, so I'm just clarifying. So this one is going to be for US History I and II?
Yes.
All right. So when you, those five classes of students, was that just, was, how many were sophomore classes? How many were junior classes?
One was a senior class, or a couple of AP US History classes, which would be juniors currently. We didn't do it with any current sophomores. It was kind of, the sample size was after the AP test. I asked a couple of the AP teachers. We asked a couple of the senior teachers who were getting ready to wrap things up, so. Different levels, definitely a variety of different levels with this, with the senior class, and then some AP kids as well.
And you talked a little bit about the guiding principles. How many guiding principles were there in total?
Off the top of my head, I think there's six, right?
Eight.
Eight?
Eight.
Okay.
Six or eight.
I didn't know. There was a form in there in the earlier slides. How was that form used, and was that the only form used? When looking at, it's on the objective.
It was like the biased one?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the biased one. That's something that the school department put together, that we looked at. We, so if you're using the curriculum, or if you're picking new curriculum sources, we went with what the district had in place.
So how was the form, I guess you, like, who filled it out? How was that evaluated?
We had students fill it out to see what they thought, and then teachers had discussions about, like, we got a lot of the, the better feedback when teachers just had the discussion. When they just filled that out, it was very, yep, 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 yep. I think the discussion piece was where we got more of the content of, and better feedback about the, like, about the textbook.
So I have a couple, first to follow up on that. So you said five, five students?
Five classes.
Five classes of students?
Yes.
How much time did, did they actually spend, like, really reading this book, and I mean?
They, we're each given a different chapter. So one class took like a, it was like the Obama and Trump chapter.
Okay.
Then another group did something around the Civil War, and another group did, I want to say like the Civil Rights Movement. Because we wanted to see any kind of, of material, how it was presented in, in certain ways. So, we tried to pick some chapters for those students.
Okay, but you made it a more, a more reasonable task.
Yeah, I didn't, hey, here's a, this is a very big, big book.
I was going to say, I mean, like, I can't believe that students would volunteer to like, read that and, and give you good feedback on it.
We gave them, we gave them, this is, this is very heavy. I'm not sure you want to give a student this, especially if freshman or sophomore, I don't know if they're going to carry that around.
Unless it was part of their weightlifting.
Maybe.
Okay, so that was one, so it was, it was five classes and they were given?
Yes.
Sections to evaluate where they could see themselves, or hopefully see themselves, okay. Next question, the supporting, the supporting materials. The end of the presentation started to get into that, but are they, are they pretty extensive?
Yes, there's videos, there is like a?
Primary source guided.
Reading that is here. All of this, all, all of this is, is, is available online in PDFs so that they can kind of take some of these primary sources, some readings, put it onto like a classroom type of resource that Savis has. So, it's, it's very extensive what they have available.
So that, so the teachers have some freedom there to choose from, from those materials?
Yes.
That they think will best support what they're trying to get across?
Yes, and I, and I think that this also gives the teachers the opportunity, this is kind of like the blueprint. They can definitely supplement other materials. I mean, we have spent over the past couple of years, some of our funds in getting other resources for our teachers, the Choices Program. I know a lot of them use Stanford, like, Education, DBQ Project. So they do use a variety of different resources.
Okay. Then I had one, if we could go back, if you don't mind, I'd like to, I'm a little confused by the flowchart. And I love flowcharts, but, as a being a technical person, yeah.
All those math people love the, love the flowchart. They love it.
Love flowcharts. Perch charts can't, give me, give me, give me charts.
Makes my head hurt.
But that one has a lot of arrows.
Yes.
That one on the right. So, what I'm trying to understand is, so, is every, every block there, how do I put it?
So those are all?
I, I thought that when you took, for example, Global Thought or American Thought, right, that incorporated the regular curriculum as well. So, in other words, a student didn't have to take two courses to get through.
So if you take Global Thought, like, the arrows mean you could do any of the next three? So if you take Global Thought and you just didn't like it, and you didn't want to do the American Thought, you could go to US History. But if you didn't, if you want the AP credit, you could go there. So that's why the lines are going to, it gives you three different options.
So, am I interpreting it correctly on the right? You can take any path that gets you to the finish line, and you've met your requirement?
Yes.
So, because I was a little confused, like, which of those are electives where you were taking an additional course?
The electives are all at the bottom, so those are all the core classes on like the right.
It's a small, I got it, okay. So for example, if I, if I, I could take a path where I go World Civ I, AP World History, AP US History, AP Government Politics?
Yes.
I'm good.
Yep.
Yeah, I think all students are taking one, each row, one of those.
One of those.
You could take, if you really loved social studies, you could take a couple of those Senior Year and load up on them too, or Junior, supplement them too, but you're going to take one of those on those.
Okay, and then the true electives are all in the bubble on the left?
Yes.
Okay, I got it.
So you have to take three years of history, and the core would be World Civ I, US I, US II. But like I, but, but sophomore year, you could take AP World and then continue Junior Year, taking AP?
Got it, okay.
Or just?
So say a stronger student could take a path sort of in the middle or the right, and if in 12th grade they wanted to load up on science, they're not required to take the 12th grade course. Got it, okay, thank you.
They could just take Sports of the Past, which is an amazing one.
I've heard about that one.
Self-plug there.
I was just going to say self-plug.
Okay, hang on, that might be it for me, but I just wanted to check. Yeah, no, that's good, thank you.
Couple of quick questions. So, looks like last time we really invested was about 20 years ago, okay? Obviously, you know, how, how we're looking at some things in the lenses that we do, you know, certainly changes. If we invest in this, you know, there's a lot of online materials. Is there a, I don't know, a maintenance or a subscription fee for updates that may happen in five years? Or, I mean, like, if we're, if we're going to, not that 75, it's, it's a lot of money, right? But, you know, if this lasts us 10 years or 20 years, right? How does that kind of go through that process? Is there any?
I believe it's a five-year license, and then you'd have to renew it for another five years.
And is that like another seven, do you have any idea if that's another?
I don't, I do not have the price. It will not be 75 because we won't have the?
Because it won't be the actual book? Okay, all right, that's what I thought. And then for, I have a note, I can't even read it now, I'm sorry. So if a student, so they have three years, but let's say in their Senior Year, if they wanted to do, for example, like, let's say they had done kind of that left column there, so World History I and II for US, if they wanted to flip over and then do American Thought as a senior, are they able to do that? Or is this really kind of?
Currently, no.
They're not, so they couldn't do that. So they would have to take electives, one or two electives to kind of move forward.
You don't have to Senior Year take any?
You don't have to, right. But if you're like interested in history, right, you have one option, which is AP Gov, right?
That's the only?
Full year?
Yes.
And otherwise you're taking?
Electives, yes.
One or two electives over the course of that. And I'm just curious, like, why couldn't you go down into like Amp Thought? Is it just?
It's a very good question.
Yeah, I also don't know if we've had people come in and inquire on that one because it's been Junior Year class too, so.
Okay.
It's an interesting question, yeah. I'd be curious to kind of dig in to see if we've had that sort of request.
I'm going to try to make guidance a little more miserable, to say, assigned students.
It could be scheduling.
Because traditionally, it's always been a Junior Year course, so.
Right.
It's one of those things that once it kind of goes, you're kind of there too, so.
Yeah. One of the things that I think is always interesting, right, when the course of studies kind of comes out, and, and a lot of times it's 8th grade parents who start really kind of looking at that, and, you know, you might not look at that for your second or third kid perhaps. But, you know, when your first one, right, you, you really kind of look through, right? And there's some really amazing classes that are offered, and some, some really just different ones. And so like, I kind of look at that and like, you know, Amp Thought is, is a great class, right? But like, if you're kind of locking it in for that, so I would just, you know, want to be curious. Kids have the, you know, it may not be appropriate to take a freshman year history class because they've already kind of done that, right? But there's, there's some good variety in that 10th, 11th.
Both the Global Thought and American Thought are on waitlist.
That's what I was going to say.
So they're, I mean, they're, they're, they are very popular courses, and they do meet double block. So it is kind of a, a huge portion of their day.
Of a schedule.
Yeah, so the double block may actually probably be that deciding thing with other classes for seniors as well. Okay, I didn't realize it was?
By the scheduling.
Yeah.
Remember, my kids trying to tumble it, make their schedule to do things.
But they didn't even have double blocks back then.
No, they didn't, no.
It's improved.
Oh, no, they did, but it was even tighter schedule.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's not like now. That was back in the day.
It's not that long ago.
No, but back in the day, I mean, just to be clear, like, how far we've come, right? There was a point where, I mean, we didn't have many electives at North End High School. It's grown with the different schedules, and also the increase of staff, the thoughtful planning. We were, it wasn't that long ago that a student, I mean, there were real choices to make. If you wanted to take, you know, a bio, or I mean, a, a science class with a lab, like, you were missing a Spanish class twice a week. You know, if you wanted to take music, there were choices. You know, it's tough enough just looking at the history courses and social studies. You know, if you're a science or math person, and we showed you all those electives, you'd be like, oh, I want to take this, I'd like to take this. But at the end of the day, you know, I think what they've done a nice job in is there are standards in which the state says we have to teach. There's a variety of ways to do it, and the ability to use our resources to hit those so that we meet other requirements, you know, that's the most important thing. And there's no one-size-fits-all resource out there that's always perfect. But I appreciate the work that they've done to take a look at it, and to actually have a, you know, a physical resource. It's been a long time since we've been able to get resources at the upper level in terms of tax, so.
Yep, and I do actually remember my other question, but are you working with like neighboring towns or other districts? I'm curious, like, how many other communities are kind of picking this textbook? Or, you know, I, I think you showed on one of the slides, like, you know, three or four different other things that you might have looked at. Like, are we the only one who's picking this one? Is this like?
I don't have the list in front of me. There is a, a list that we got from Desi that has different towns. I haven't looked at it in that much depth.
Okay. I'd just be curious if we're, I mean, if we're the only one who's picking a textbook, that might be a little bit odd. But if, you know, we're kind of going with the norm, then, you know, that, that's interesting as well, okay.
The other thing I wanted to mention is that we have also, our intent is to provide some funding over the summer for the social studies teachers at the high school to work together with Brian on the curriculum, get, becoming familiar with the resource, you know, looking at those changes, how are they going to address all of that material? Because it's too much to do during the school year, and obviously, we're still in the process of this proposal. So there is, that is our intent as well, to provide some time and some financial backing for them to be able to do some work.
Savis also offers some training. They have some webinars, they have people come in and kind of go over all of the online stuff to make our teachers more aware of all of the resources that are available.
Yeah, and just one last thing, just on my end too, to commend our social studies department. That's 20 years from, you know, 2002 to now. They developed resources, they developed assignments, they developed all these skills to modernize our social studies education, to allow it to be accommodated and modified for our students now. You know, and I know a lot of the textbooks have the resources, you know. Sure Savis isn't the only one on there too, but a lot of our other departments have had those for years, so they've, they've done a great job in educating our, our students and trying to hit those, those skills that Brian outlined in the presentation as well, so. I think it's a, when it comes, it's a, it'll be a great, exciting thing for, for our staff.
Can I ask?
No.
Sorry, they came to me. I don't like going first. This one, how did this book compare to the cost of other potential books? Was it in the, are they all around the same price? Is this one a really good value? Is this the Cadillac? Do we not know?
I didn't get quotes from the other one.
And then, I guess this is, goes back to what Ms. Marx just said. Is there any other needed PD that we would need to fund to make sure that using the source is worthwhile?
I think the teachers working together is important and looking at the curriculum. And then like Brian said, you know, Savis does offer some PD. Just like Chet mentioned, Brian has been very active with all of the history work, and he has brought in trainers over the past few years for lots of information, he has the history lab, there's all kinds of exciting work that's happened, aside from the fact that we, you know, we didn't have a current textbook. So I think, I, I will say, I, probably Brian's probably the closest person I've worked with in the high school over the years. We did the race amity work together, a lot, a lot of different things together. We just had a student who worked with the Historical Society, she did a phenomenal video for the hay scales, like, there's a lot of little projects that we've kind of worked together on, and I, I have been impressed and fully trust Brian's judgment in terms of the PD that he's offered, in terms of his suggestions regarding texts and curriculum. And again, we met, we've met weekly for the past few weeks, all of us going, going over this as well. So I think that, you know, there is, we don't have endless PD time either, so I think what Brian has always done has been to use it, use it effectively, and I know that that will continue. I think the first step is to get people time this summer in, in the resource and looking at those changes and how they're going to address that, so.
Mr. McDevitt, this might be a question for you, what are we voting on? The money, the resource, the change in program of studies, all three?
I think it's all three. Well, the, the money piece is something we're budgeting for, you know, that's something that's been part of our plan. We're really here tonight, the main reason is, you know, one of the policies is traditional textbook adoption. We need a resource, and we're, you know, the, the resource to teach those standards, so the adjustment in the program of studies and the resource itself.
So we're voting on changing the program of studies, so the, the flow chart, and then providing the money for it?
Yeah, I mean, the money, like.
The money exists.
The money is already kind of in the budget, right? So that's already, so that's kind of already been established, but it's kind of approving the curriculum.
Got it, thank you.
Can I ask one more follow-up question?
Sure.
I'm sorry. Out of those classes that evaluated it, was there any way to kind of test their comprehension of what they read, that they were understanding the material that they read in that chapter?
That wasn't part of the framework of what they were examining, I think that they could, because there are, I mean, we do have these resources that come with all of it, so if we could simulate a, hey, read this chapter and here are some guiding questions that go with it. We didn't do that in examining it, it was more just for bias, language and things like that, but if you would like us to do that, we can.
I was just curious, suppose.
To follow up on that, I mean, what's your intuition though tell you about how they, how they did?
I think that they can easily figure it out, answer questions, answer all of it. That was one of the concerns that we had as a department, is the level, when you get a textbook, the variety of different levels. I think that the way that this is built with the online resources, I think that it breaks it down, there are, there's a Spanish version, there's, there's different versions that I think can appeal to all of our learners, and again, that was one of the things that we were cognizant of when we were going through this.
So when, when you reviewed it, you reviewed it with just the teachers, or did you actually have a discussion with some of the students?
We started as a department, and then I gave this couple of chapters to different teachers, they gave it to their students, and they had discussions, they, hey, what did you guys think of this? And I, I, like, the feedback was really positive from the teachers who had the discussions. Couple of them just, here you go, fill out this sheet, and they all just checked it. There was, some of the other teachers had more of a in-depth discussion about it.
Oh, okay, so they, they had the discussion with the students, then brought that, those results to you?
Yes.
Okay. That's it?
That's it, all right. Stay tuned.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all. You want me to leave this stuff for you guys to take a look?
Yeah, that'd be great. All right, awesome, thank you. All right. We did B and C, we are going to student funds, so student activity accounts must be approved by the school committee each year. This is a list of the student activity accounts and the current status. And Dr. Millie, I assume, is the, we have confirmed with the person responsible that any are, with a zero balance are still needed, so that's always kind of a question, because sometimes they may go in for a year or two without funds, but it just kind of, sometimes depends upon what's going on with a club or an activity. So these are the different, different accounts, and some of them do cycle out, so for example, I just saw like Class of 2020, right? So that, I think stays on the books for five years, and then it kind of moves off. But these are our activity accounts and current balances. So if you have any questions, we will get them back for the next meeting, but Dr. Gilligan, anything you want to add? No, I, any questions, you know, certainly check with Dr. Millie and get them back, he's out, not here tonight. And these accounts have been around a long time, they're always reconciled, and Mr. McDevitt is right, there was a shift, change with classes that graduated years ago, it could be 10 years plus, and they'd still have money, but typically, there's a process for that, and they get ready for the five-year reunion typically, so. Anything else on these?
What's Bourbon Red?
Which, what number, sorry?
121.
Bourbon Red is the literary magazine of North End of High School. They used to have the slogan Bourbon Red is Bourbon Ready.
I see, this just jumped out at me, right?
What are you thinking, Mr. Brown? Lucy McCarthy works, part of her job on these, and it's a lot of work. Does a great job with it. Awesome, all right. We will now move over to public comment, so seeing none, hearing none, any member comments?